And is Nathan.
That's okay.
It's, I called a planning and East Windsor Planning and Zoning Meeting of August 11th. Meeting number 1786. We call it to order. There are three regular members and two alternates. Anne and Marty, I'm going to ask you both to sit in tonight if that's all right with you.
That's fine.
I'm all set with that. Okay. We have Frank, too.
No, Frank was on last meeting, though.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
I'm just trying to be fair. Legal notice. There was one. But it's also a new public hearing, but. The application from 32 North Road LLC for special use permit for auto body work in respect to restoration at 32 North Road. Map 113, block 17, Zone District M1. This was in the Journal Inquirer editions of July 30th and August 6th of 2020. Added agenda items? None. Public participation. Is there anyone in the audience that has anything that they would like to say which is not on tonight's agenda?
Mr. Chairman, this is Jason.
Yes.
I'd like to just take a minute to introduce Mike Damato, who's with CHA. Mike is going to be helping out in the planning department office until we get that department fully restaffed. He and his company have served planning functions, zoning functions, regulatory enforcement functions, POCD drafting roles in many communities, particularly in Eastern Connecticut. Robin Newton referred them to us and we brought them on board starting effectively last, I think. Actually, yeah, Mike's first day with us was the day after the hurricane, which was probably a sight to see. So I just wanted to introduce him. He comes with a wealth of experience and knowledge, I think will help us to kind of department rowing in a direction that is efficient, effective, and customer friendly. The other thing I wanted to make mention of is on August 24th, we will have our new zoning enforcement officer in place. Ruth Ann Calabrese is her name. She has been a zoning enforcement official in Cheshire, Brooklyn, and one other community that I can't recall. And then she went off and led most of her career in the utility sector, including working for EverSource as a community liaison. And then she became a consultant where she's worked on solar projects and similar type things. So I think she's got a really interesting background that will help, be helpful in a number of ways to the community. So she'll be coming on board on August 24th and then we're still in the recruitment phase for a new town planner. My intention is to keep Mike and CJ on for a couple of months after we have everybody staffed up to allow for that onboarding process really to take hold and for their help in guiding that. And I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge and thank again Joe Sauerhoffer and Len Norton for all the help that they have provided to that department over the last, actually, it's, we're on months now. I have been very grateful for them for their willingness to step up and be part of the team. So with that, I just wanted to introduce Mike and make sure you guys knew that we're still working on the things that you all expect us to be working on.
All right, good. Thank you very much, Jason. It's nice to see progress being made.
We're blazing at the speed of government.
Yeah, it's a little faster than we're used to, though. Okay, moving along, approval of minutes of the July 28th meeting. Anyone have any comments?
This is Frank. I read them and as far as I can tell, everything was in order.
Anyone else?
I'm satisfied. I went through them also.
And as did I, so I will. No other comments? Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say I could make a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from 1785 on July 28th, 2020.
Oh, second half motion.
All those in favor, show of hands.
Aye.
Could you do a roll call for me? You've got too many people here for me to see hands.
Oh, okay.
I apologize.
My, myself, Frank, Anne, Mike Krawski.
Timmy.
Timmy.
Okay.
Tim, Tim Throff. I mean, Tim, Tim Moore, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Close enough.
Yeah. Everybody agreed, Peg.
Thank you.
Performance bonds, there were none. Continued public hearings. We have the 32 North Road Special Use Permit for Auto Body Work in Respect to Restoration at 32 North Road. Is anyone here from the from the company on 32 North Road?
Yeah, I'm Jay. Mike, we're the two guys starting that company.
Okay, great.
Point of order, Chairman?
That's a new public hearing, not a continued public hearing.
Oh.
Oh, okay, yes. Yes, you're right. The other one was informal. Yes, this is a new public hearing. The floor is yours, gentlemen.
The floor is ours. Okay, um, so. All right. Again, my name is Jason Hoyt and this is.
I'm Michael Maturski.
And as we talked about in the informal meeting, our intent is to open a restoration shop and also perform electric conversions on classic cars. And we are looking for a special use permit to allow the auto body, auto body portion of that business to, you know, to be able to complete the restorations as needed. We are not asking for a spray booth or any means to spray any kind of primers or paints on site. We have a subcontractor for that. So I guess, keep it short, I can, I can open up and ask any questions. I did see some inter-office emails between departments concerning outside storage, which there will be no outside storage of parts or cars. I talked to the, I sent some information to the fire marshal. I haven't heard back from him yet if he wanted to see a floor plan and also an intent of what we were planning on doing. So we gave him a floor plan with how our layout would be and whatnot. So I don't know if he had any concerns, but that's the short of it. Is there, are there any questions for us regards to this? This is all new to me, so I'm learning how this whole process works, so.
Any comments from members of the commission?
This is Frank. Lenny, do you have any concerns? I read your memo. Have you looked into it any further?
No, there's no, from my standpoint, there we're having a public hearing because our auto body shop, which it's kind of a minimal auto body shop, but it is some auto body work taking place, requires a special use permit, which requires a public hearing, which we're doing now. And that being said, from a, from my standpoint as the town engineer looking at the site, there's no construction or any improvements proposed to the site. So that's fine with me. I have no problems with it. Seems to meet the regs.
Well, one last question, Lenny. Is the fire marshal has to give the okay on this before we can make a decision?
I would think the fire marshal would have to give the okay before they could start working. I don't know if he needs to, and maybe, like, Tomato, what, how do you feel about that?
Based on what they're talking about, unless there's a, you know, a change of use per the building code that would require some type of evaluation on that end, I don't see why there would need to be any fire marshal approvals before they can go ahead and get started. There's no modifications happening. And. Go ahead.
Sorry, I can add in that to get our automobile repair license through the state of Connecticut, we have to have the fire marshal sign off on the state requirements. So the fire marshal will be taking a tour and confirming that the building meets his requirements, but that's later on in the process once the town says it's okay.
So this is Len. I guess Frank, to answer your question, I guess they're okay.
Yes, that answers my question. Thank you.
The other, the other person that I spoke to was, I can't remember names, I'm sorry, but I spoke to the health department and I spoke to the public water people and one of the other concerns they have about automotive use in any building is if there's floor drains because you have a EPA concern if you have a spill in oil or antifreeze or anything goes in into the water system. And the building does not have floor drains, so all of it, anything that spills will be cleaned up, you know, in a timely fashion and not become a hazardous problem. So they were happy, kind of happy that there were no floor drains. So that's another thing that usually is dealt with.
Okay, that was, that was gonna be one of my questions. What are you gonna do with environmentally hazardous materials? How are you gonna handle that?
Okay, the state requires that we have waste containers. Usually they're 55 gallon drums. We are going to store our used oil, used antifreeze, and oil filters on a, it's a, it's basically a plastic containment. It's like a pallet that's got a grid on it. So if any spill happens, it goes into the pallet and not onto the ground. Now, as far as running a business goes, our business model is, is very high-end and the client base, as I said before, is, is, is also, they're looking for perfection and cleanliness and very organized, or they don't leave their expensive cars with us. So we, at other locations, other businesses I've worked for, I build what I call a crash cart. It's basically a, one of those Rubbermaid floor, like janitor carts. And on it, we have cleanup materials, speedy dry pig mats, like all that stuff. So if something happens and we need to in a hurry get it cleaned up, we run over, you know, grab this cart, wheel it over and instantly clean up what we have to clean up. But generally, our experience kind of keeps us keeping the shop well, but accidents do happen and we stay on top of it because we don't want to have a mess in our shop because that's not the kind of operation we're gonna run, so.
And will you be open to the public?
Say again?
Will you be open to the public?
Yeah, I mean, most, this is a, anybody's welcome to come in. I don't know what exactly you mean. We're gonna have client cars and I'm sure we're gonna have plenty of walk-ins and people that can stop at any time and even make appointments to get tours and all that good stuff. So one of our short-term goals is to try to have, you know, as long as it's all approved by the landlord and the town, a little bit small, like morning, Sunday morning cars and coffee events where cars would get together in the parking lot and everybody could hang out and chat and social situations around cars and the business and whatnot. So we're gonna have a lot of local activities, if you will, related to cars on premise, provided landlord and town doesn't have any major problems with that.
Okay, there's a. You gotta quit barking there for that.
See, the advantage of doing that on a weekend or a Sunday is it's off hours from the rest of the businesses there. And then it's, and usually like a cars and coffee event, for example, that's usually eight in the morning to 10:00 in the morning, or like sometimes they do them like seven to nine. It's a real short thing. And there's nobody, there's nobody in the building complex, you know, so. Yeah, I don't mean like 150 cars. I'm talking about like 10 cars, 20 cars. These are small events. Local people, just enthusiasts, you know?
Okay, that's it for my questions. Anyone else?
I'm fine. This is Frank. I'm fine.
I have a question. So from, from the exterior, is there gonna be any changes that the public is gonna know that you're there? Any type of signage or anything that will change?
Just the sign out front.
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's an existing sign that is out by the road that has all the tenants. So we get a tenant space on that sign and we'll put our name on it. I haven't talked to the landlord yet to find out what the requirements or the maximum allowable is on the building. I don't, I don't believe there are any signs on the building. I know one of the neighboring, there's a fitness place next door. They have a sign outside, but believe it or not, our business model and the type of clients and what we're doing, we don't need and don't even really want giant signage. We would like the little thing out the road and that's it. All of our marketing is gonna be done online and by word of mouth. So we're not, we actually prefer that this is in the back of this complex, not that visible, especially for the type of car we're gonna have. We don't want like flashy storefront windows with million dollar cars behind them. It draws the wrong attention, you know, so. It's, it's actually a good thing. And myself and Mike both have worked in the sign industry and I've had to go to zoning numerous times to get signs approved and changed. So I'm actually kind of familiar with how it works and square footage and frontage and all that stuff. So when the time was right, I was gonna come and see you guys and find out what the exact zoning rules were and make sure we abide. Very good. That's all I had.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from public who'd like to make a comment or have a question on these gentleman? Hello, someone's trying to sign on? So. I guess not. It doesn't, it doesn't appear that way.
One of, one of the other things about this business that we are trying to really set ourselves apart with is the EV conversion portion of this. Electric cars and, you know, Teslas and all that, they're really starting to become more popular than ever. And as I think I mentioned in the other meeting, we have access because of positioning in the market, basically. We've had access to a lot of people who are very, very knowledgeable in the classic car restoration business. And most of them we talk to believe that this is a very good avenue to pursue. And so the restoration part of this business is strictly at this point to help fund the EV part of it. As, to get, buying the parts to do an EV conversion is kind of costly. And, you know, finding a customer to do our first car is kind of one of our hopes. We have something lined up, but we still have to fund it. So we have lots of restoration type work lined up. But our primary goal is to do EV conversions and other businesses we know of in the country that are doing it are on major backlogs and wait lists. And especially since COVID happened in places like LA where traffic went down to a minimum and like they could actually see the improvement in their air quality and other things. So people have firsthand seen what happens when gasoline combustion engines are limited and what a difference it makes in the environment. So it actually changed this business a little bit more and I think created more of a demand. So our approach is to experiment with cars that are maybe less typical for EV conversions. A lot of people pick a lot of air-cooled Porsches, Volkswagens, Carmen Ghia, stuff that didn't have antifreeze and it was easier to convert, but we're gonna expand that and do things that people wouldn't expect, which is gonna hopefully raise good awareness. I really think you're gonna strike up more than one conversation when we're at the same charging station as a Tesla, trying to plug in our early 60s, you know, Jag or whatever, and people are like, what is this? So it's, it's gonna be exciting. And that's, that's the big plan is to make that be the primary part of it.
Any other comments from the commission or the public?
This is Tim. I have a question that might not really pertain to anything right now, but as far as having cars stored there that are worth so much money, I'm not coming at this from a greedy perspective, but with town taxes, if they drive by and see a million dollar car sitting in your garage, are you gonna be taxed by the town? Not, not that it really pertains to us, I'm just curious.
It's okay. To my knowledge, the owners of the car and what the town they live in is where they pay the taxes on the car. Since these are client cars and customer cars, I don't believe we'd be have to deal with the taxes end of it, but even if we had our own personal cars stored there, the cars would be registered to the towns we live in and that's where the taxes would be paid, you know, property taxes on the car. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering if these are like registered cars or if they're collector cars that have no registration and you're, you know, they're kind of taxed wherever they sit.
Yeah.
Like you say, if they're a million dollar car, that, that would be good for our town.
Right. I think, I, I know that having experience in the restoration business and as of the past five to 10 years business in it, I've seen the growth of car restoration. And every shop I've worked at has had a backlog. Every single shop has got people coming in every week saying they need something and they, and the staff. So I know that we will be growing. I can't say how many employees we're gonna hire. I can't say what our projected revenue is at this point. We have some rough ideas. But I know that in, in short time, we're gonna be growing and hiring more people and ultimately that'll be beneficial for the town. So.
Yeah, I think also you're gonna be drawing attraction. There's, there's plenty of benefits. I was just, I was curious about that one, how that would pan out.
Okay.
That's good. That was my one question.
Mr. Chairman. He's gonna use the men's room, I think.
Hold on, I'm here.
Are you ready for a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, can we have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I'll move to close the public hearing on the special use permit application, PZ 2020-14, related to 32 North Road LLC, Jason Hoyt and Michael Maturski. For the purposes of conducting automotive repair in M1 Zone.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye. Identify yourself.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Richard Sullivan.
Aye, Mike Krawski.
We unanimous? Marty, you there?
I was on mute, sorry. Yes, I vote yes.
Okay. Motion passes. And now we need a if there's no more discussion, we need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve, yeah.
I have one question.
Oh, sorry.
I'm looking at the memo that was sent today. There's only six terms and conditions. Traditionally, we tend to have a lot more than that. Is there anything in the boilerplate? Is there any MyLars? Is there any middles? Is there anything else that needs to be added to the terms and conditions that we normally have in our boilerplate application?
Yeah, so I, I think you might have seen in the email, you know, I, when I was in the building last week, there was no internet or phone, so I didn't have access to any materials. So I reviewed based on the information I got two days ago and I went through the minutes from their informal presentation and read through some of the previous, and I know you guys typically do have a lot of conditions. Because there's no site plan associated with this, because there's no exterior modifications proposed, I don't know that unless it's something you require on all applications, that there would be a need for a Mylar, which is why you'll see on one of those conditions that I put number two, a copy of the special permit issued pursuant to this application shall be filed in the clerk's office. That is what I'm sure, as you know, gives them, you know, sort of, is finalizes this approval. So if there's other conditions you wanna workshop, I'm happy to kind of add those as, you know, on the fly. But I, I looked at what I saw and tried to see what would apply here and kind of took out the ones that I thought didn't. If that helps.
This is Frank. Mike, it just seems to me that, that, that there's, there's some things missing and don't ask, don't ask me what they are because I can't tell you right now, but it seems to me that perhaps, perhaps we ought to review that. We can approve it under the condition that it's rewritten or written correctly.
Great. This is Len. I think as Mike said, I know you're used to seeing pages and pages, but you know, the first page of a condition of approval a lot of times for a site plan is basically just listing out the sheets of the site plan. And then there's conditions that have to do with filing MyLars. What do you do before construction? What do you do? I read, you know, Mike forwarded me that motion for approval and it really, this is really a a use permit and there's really not a lot involved with it other than their use. And in there, it said that they need to get their state motor vehicle permit and that they have to file with the land records. You know, I'm not really a town planner, but based upon what they're going to do and the approval motion that Mike did, I gotta say, I think it's adequate. It's okay. I don't know what else to add.
And I'll add that, that the conditions that you'll see there, you know, about project vehicles and vehicles displayed for sale, material supply, you know, those were written by, partially after going through the informal presentation, but also in just understanding these businesses and the fact that this use permit doesn't go away if these guys, you know, decide to sell to someone else. They were written with this, the understanding that, that someone could still utilize this special use permit and do something that is a little bit different. So we really are trying to regulate the exterior components of the business so that this doesn't turn into, well, they get really busy and now they've got 15 cars and next thing you know, it's a used car lot outside. So that was what a lot of those, those conditions were geared towards. But yeah, you know, I, like I said, if there's something specific or there's a concern, we can certainly, I'm happy to type it up and add it on the fly, you know, but you know, we couldn't condition the approval that the conditions be rewritten. We'd have to have on the record what those conditions were.
Mike, this is Frank. You, you're absolutely correct. I was, I was out of order to even suggest that they be rewritten. Thank you.
You're putting me through the paces today. Meeting one.
I just, I just wanted to bring it up because it seemed unusual to me to have, you know, only six conditions, but I'm satisfied with, with the response.
Yeah, I think it's a very simple thing, just allowing the use of a pre-existing space. So I think we're ready to move forward and approve if everybody else is.
I'm, I'm satisfied with those conditions of approval in that we're not putting up a new building, we're not doing anything else. You know, it's a tenant in an existing place. I'm good with it.
Would you like a motion to approve the application?
Please.
I move to approve the application for a special use permit, PZ 2020-14 from 32 North Road LLC, Jason Hoyt and Michael Matroski. Applicant to occupy 32 North Road, Unit 11, Map 113, Block 17. I move to approve the application for a special use permit, PZ 2020-14, from 32 North Road LLC, Jason Hoyt and Michael Metross, applicant to occupy 32 North Road, Unit 11, Map 113, Block 17, Lot 003A, for the purpose of conducting automotive repair in an M1 zoning district. This motion to approve is about six conditions that are in the August 10th, 2020 memo for Michael D'Amato, interim town planner to the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All those in favor, identify yourselves, please.
Ann Gobin, aye.
Richard Sullivan, aye.
Tim Moore, aye.
Mike Kowalski, aye.
Marty Shigailo, aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations, gentlemen. Nice to have you on the town.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with your business.
Thank you.
What, what would you do with a 68 El Camino Super Sport?
Whatever you want.
That's the right answer.
Whatever your pocketbook can afford.
It'll probably stay the way it is.
That's a good answer because I would just have to probably kill you if you touch that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck in your new venture. New business, although we've already met him. Mike D'Amato, you're our new business for the evening.
Yeah, so I'm sure, as you know, maybe you don't, but maybe for the benefit of the recording, this Connecticut general statutes require that a planning and zoning commission appoint their agent, and that is what gives that person the authority to act on their behalf and do things like issue notices of violation and other things. So while the town has recently found, you know, thankfully, a really qualified person to be CEO, you know, as they come on board and we start working through things and, and trying to make sure that we're doing everything as efficiently as possible, having two people that are appointed and have the authority to sign notices on behalf of the commission is important. And should we get our hands into something more complicated, not having that appointment on the books sort of nullifies my ability to do anything. So looking for you to basically appoint me as, as your agent, zoning enforcement officer or, or a zoning official, and then when the new person starts, you will appoint them as well. We'll get them on the agenda.
Okay. Anyone have any comments about that?
So Dick, this is Jason. Mike and I spoke last week with Len and Joe as well, and we're all absolutely on the same page with that. It's the best way to go forward.
Okay, and I'm not going to argue with you.
I agree 100%. Now we have to have a motion to accept these, this person. And I can't, I can't make it tonight, so Richard will do it. Michael will do it, I'm sure.
All right, Mike, you're on the spot.
Okay. Then I'd make mention that we appoint Michael D'Amato interim zoning enforcement officer.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, identify yourselves. Richard Sullivan, aye.
Ann Gobin, aye.
Mike Kowalski, aye.
Tim Moore, aye.
Marty Shigailo, aye.
Motion passes. Glad to have you aboard.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, old business. Broadbrook Meadows re-subdivision. Joe, did you want to butt in?
Well, with everything that's happened the last week, I've done, you know, I've done my typical rounds, my problem children that I have, I've somewhat monitored them, but I haven't touched base with them. And that's about it. Unless anybody has any questions, I won't waste the commission's time tonight and that's about it. You know.
Anybody have any questions for Joe?
I think the appropriate thing to do at this point in time is for Joe to brief Mike D'Amato, so he can come up to speed on, on the various cases and where they stand. So he'll be ready to take the call.
Even the discussion of the meeting that we were basically just going to hold off unless anything really happened to, and Jason can correct me, to just have the new CEO take over everything rather than muddying the waters with Mike to do it for a week and then the new person start. Unless, yeah, unless something crazy comes up. Am I correct in assuming that, Jason?
Yeah, that's, that is, the plan is to just keep, you know, basically keep the trains running on time until we're staffed to that position in the department, in which case, assuming he's still willing, Joe, Joe can help out as needed, bring Ruth Ann up to speed and Mike will be around to help get her onboarded as well.
Makes good sense.
Okay, very good.
Well, it's been a pleasure. I don't see any again.
Joe, you really have done an awesome job, though. Thank you very much.
Joe, thank you.
I'll probably be at the next meeting and then, maybe then I can hand my file off.
Okay, since we're in that office, Lenny, do you have anything of any importance? Are you going to hang around and hear us talk about Broadbrook Meadows again?
I think I need to stick around for Broadbrook Meadow because I have some points here I think I gotta make sure you discuss.
Okay. All right. Very good. All right. We're rejoining the discussion on Broadbrook Meadows here. We've had a couple of weeks to think about this. Has, has anyone come up with any new points or a different way of looking at this? Because remember, this is just an application at this point.
I went through my notes just before the call, trying to figure out what we still had to address so that an appropriate document could be put together for us to use. And some things are clear, some things are not clear. But as I did it, I came upon a section, and I was thinking about the rear lots and the special permit for the rear lots, Section 408.3, and then the sub, or the section E under it, subsection E, whatever the correct terminology is, says no more than two contiguous rear lots may be approved. So when I look at the plans, it's very clear to me, lots 10 and 8 are contiguous. Then I look at Lot 6 and I wonder if that's contiguous. So I went to look up the definition of contiguous, and of course, it's not in the regulations. It refers us to, I'll say, planning documents and worst-case scenario Webster's dictionary. So I would appreciate if Michael D'Amato could look at that question and determine if we have more than two contiguous rear lots. It seems to me we're still have on the table the open space. And if we want a fee in lieu of open space, or if there is some public entity that wanted some open space, it sounded like in the discussion, people felt that wasn't appropriate open space for the town, but I think that was still on the table. The fire hydrant has become clear with the new documentation we got. And I believe we waived the sidewalks. So in the conditions, we would need to have a condition requiring the fee in lieu of sidewalks. The record, it looked like Wetlands had addressed the decaying barn. So U-Haul requires its removal, if I read the record correctly. And then the other thing we have hanging out there is the contamination claims and if they need to be addressed or with public water, that's adequate. And we need the acting interim town planner to put together a condition that subjects the approval to the developer's agreement. And I think from my notes, that's the things that we still have in play, but maybe Lenny or somebody else has other things they see that we need to talk through.
Okay, just, just a couple of items that I wanted to, you've actually mentioned the one, I was looking for a plan, I'm not even sure if you, the sidewalk issue, you definitely have to address because you chose not to accept the sidewalk waiver. So you have to either decide to have them put the sidewalks in or take a fee in lieu of sidewalks. And it was brought to your attention at the public hearing that there are a couple of lots that are not part of the subdivision that wouldn't end up with sidewalks in front of them unless the town were to put the sidewalks there. But that's, so that's the sidewalk issue you need to decide. And then there was the hydrant issue. And I don't, I think you got a copy of the Fire Marshal's memo, or actually, it was really an email, where he's, he's looking to have a hydrant put at the extreme north end of the water main extension to kind of be in between what's on Depot Street and farther down on East Road. So he did request that one hydrant. And I did forward that email to JR Russo, so they're aware of the location that, that he wants it.
Okay, thank you, Lenny. I, I know I've got a question in, in a way, it has to do a little bit with the sidewalks. I thought that we had left the last meeting with the sidewalks are going to be put in because it was going to be contiguous with the sidewalks that we already had running down Depot and East and Reservoir. But the way that this development is being presented, we could have five or six different builders in there, building at different times. And we, we can't go around bonding sidewalks per lot. You know, who's, how are we going to, you know, mandate that that, you know, has to go in, sidewalks have to go in, the infrastructure has to be put in place before him?
Dick, I would say that if, if you choose, if, if the commission decides they want sidewalks, then you're, you're going to direct the developer that he needs to install the sidewalks and he's going, the, the developer, the applicant developer right now is going to have to bond for those sidewalks. And he's going to have to build those sidewalks. If, this is not going to be, you know, if you look out on West River Farms, you have the same build, I mean, it's a road and it's the same builder developer. So he's building the sidewalks permanently as he's developing the lots, which is fine because it's on his new road, he's putting his sidewalks in. In this instance, I don't feel as though we want to have sidewalks constructed in front of each lot as the lot is developed. If you choose that you want sidewalks, we need to make it clear that the sidewalks are going to be installed, they're going to be bonded and they're going to be installed and they'll be part of the development agreement.
Right. They, they would basically be going in and then at the same time as the water line, you would think.
I would think once the water main goes in, the sidewalks could go in.
Right.
Can it be a condition of approval that the water main and sidewalks go in before any lots are sold?
I don't know. As long as they're, it's bonded, I, I, water main, the water main is going to have, the water main for sure has to go in on East Road before any houses are built on East Road because they're not, the water company's not going to let them put in 200 feet of water main as a house are built. So whether or not it has to be, whether or not it has to be constructed before any houses get built, I'm not sure you can do that, but certainly it would have to be constructed before any houses are built on East Road. That water main has to be put in in accordance with the Connecticut Water Company standards. They've got to put it in, they've got to test it, they, they pressure test it, the whole nine yards. So that's going to happen at one point, whether he started, whether houses start on Depot Street or right away on, on East Road or what have you. But as soon as a house is going to go on East Road, he's going to have to put the whole water main in. They're not, the water company's not going to let them put a couple hundred feet of water main.
If I could just jump in quick, I have not seen this plan yet. So, you know, don't want to sound completely naive, but you know, if the developer's agreement covers the cost of the sidewalks, then you know, it's worth having a discussion with this developer as far as what his plans would be for when they go in as far as, you know, on the schedule. The problem with putting them in early is that they likely will be damaged through the construction process. You know, sheet rock trucks and other things are really heavy and I don't know what the specs are for sidewalks in East Windsor, but you wouldn't want sidewalks to go in and then have them be broken, cracked and lifting because they've been just destroyed by all kinds of construction. So we can certainly look and see what the schedule would be and talk to them about what the installation process and what their design is. But if they're bonded for them and the bond covers the cost, then that should really lead the developer to put them in at the most appropriate time. So he doesn't have to do it again when he goes to get his bond released at the end of the project. That may not be how it's done here, but it's just food for thought, I guess.
What you didn't get the benefit of hearing is this proposal is basically to sell off lots and they may not be built by the developer. They could be built by assorted people.
So it would be a substantial, could be a substantial amount of time before, before those improvements go in. So it's a, yeah, so that would make sense that it's a challenge to figure out, you know, what comes first, the chicken or the egg. You could take the bond money and hold it forever. But short of installing the sidewalks piecemeal, yeah, it is a challenge. I'd have to think about that a little bit more, figure out if there's a way we can come up with something to deal with that.
Mike, this is Frank. The problem, the problem there is on, on, on East Road, if you just put in, say, a couple hundred feet of sidewalk in front of one house that's built there, people are going to try to walk there and that's a very, very dangerous road. It's very, sightlines are a problem there. Either, in my opinion, either you have to build all the sidewalks down East Road and let the builder then, or the developer, build as he sees fit. And I know there's a problem with your saying with heavy vehicles going over them, but I think the developer or the builder will have to deal with that. I don't think the town should worry about that.
This is Tim. I have, I have a question. I guess that kind of relates to the sidewalks in a way. We talked about, it's a little convoluted, but we talked about the open space. I don't think we ever finished talking about that. So I know it's another point, but if they were to give us open space on the corner, is there a way that we could? That's in that, there's, say it's the corner and we, the town's going to get an acre, they can only access that for construction purposes, especially for the back. especially for the back lots, but I guess a back lot wouldn't have a sidewalk. Oh, maybe, maybe that doesn't make sense. But another question I have was on the, the water line. It looked like Connecticut Water by the state, if we're within the water main coming down, anybody to build a house within 200 feet of that water main would have to put in public water? Is that something you've heard of before?
That's a very good question because I've, I've had, I had that experience in doing some building myself. If you had a well and you were within 200 feet of a water line, you had to connect up to the water line. That was on Crisick Road.
Yeah, and there's some other lots for sale down East Road. I know that didn't pertain to sidewalks, but it started up with the water main.
It's in the public health code, what you're saying, Tim. You can't drill a well if you're within 200 feet of a water main, you have to connect. So if you had a pre-existing well, I don't think they can make you connect unless it's contaminated.
That, that is.
Okay.
But it's in the public health code.
Yes, that is correct. They can't, they can't make, you know, they can't make you connect if, if your well is fine. But if you are within 200 feet of a water main and you want to build a new house and put a well in, you need to extend the water main. That's absolutely correct.
So that would, that would then add cost to neighboring.
I was under the impression that if, and this is through an experience of my own, if you had a house that was, had E D B in it, which all the houses on the east side of, the other side of, of the road have wells and a water main comes down, you had to connect to it. You had to, you didn't have a choice.
That's what I, that's what I was understanding.
Well, well Frank, what they, they do, that may be the case. But what might happen is the state, which is still paying for the activated carbon filters, if there's a water main available, they may tell you, you can stay on your well, but we're not going to supply you with the filters anymore. I, I, I'm not sure about the E D B issue, whether or not they.
I think the state E D B funding ran out. I think they stopped doing that because we have two houses that are contaminated wells and I've had to pay to get the carbon and water tested and all that stuff done now.
That, that is true. I'm, I'm in the same boat there and the, the state no longer does it.
I, excuse me, but I think, I think the state will not pay for the, the aqua pump to service your, your wells if the state found that the E D B level is below the safety of the, of the household. I believe that's true. Because I have E D B and my, my level of E D B is high. So I still get it taken care of because the town is responsible for providing potable water to the, to the, to its inhabitants.
Interesting, Frank.
I, I just, yeah, I just spent a lot this year on my water system because they said they wouldn't pay for it. Maybe that's the case though. Another question on the sidewalks, could we make a, a condition of approval for them to put sidewalks in front of the other two lots since they're surrounding those lots with the new subdivision? Could we just have it, can we add that as a condition of approval to fill in that other 375 feet with sidewalk?
I don't see why we can't do that because it's going to be on.
Uh, you, no, you can't do that because that's private property. Those people don't want sidewalks in front of their house. You can't make it, so they'd have to maintain it.
Yeah, but it is town property though, Marty.
It's in the right of way and then they, now those town, those residents are opposed to sidewalks on their property. They don't have anything to do with the, they were pre-existing before that subdivision.
What about if they were to add sidewalks down something like Perry Lane? Wouldn't we be then just adding under the, what, I think that was mentioned as a plan to make a walking loop down Perry Lane down Depot Street? Wouldn't we then be just putting a sidewalk in the right of way? Or even down Reservoir or anywhere else that we plan to put sidewalks?
Perry Lane already has sidewalks. Basically the plan is to come up Depot and then the, the sidewalks already exist in Perry Lane and then, then they go down Reservoir down towards the center.
So we wouldn't be crossing anybody else's private property by putting in sidewalks in that loop?
Well, we're going to be crossing in front of all kinds of private properties in our right of way.
So I, I think that's a similar situation.
Yeah, but that, that's a town-funded project. It's, you're not putting it on a developer to put sidewalks in front of somebody else's property that he's not developing.
I, I, I think we need to have someone that, that knows the, the ins and outs here to, to help us out. Otherwise we're just going to be talking about all kinds of different scenarios. I don't know if Mike is, to put him in a spot, he's only been here a few days, whether he can add any information or if he should just say, let's wait until I can find out what's happening.
Yeah, so you, I believe I was trying to find a reference to it, but I can't find it now. Uh, there's case law that says that you can't require off-site improvements for a subdivision. If the developer wants to do it and everybody's on board and the neighbors are fine with it, then that's one thing that he may choose to do. But I, I, I believe there's established case law in Connecticut that you cannot require off-site improvements only within the project limits.
That answers my question.
Okay, I, I have an issue that's kind of a broader thing. So even to get us to a point of where we can make a motion, we do not have any new memo in order to reference terms and conditions. We have, the, the, the most recent one that I have was the July 9th memo from Ruben, which in our last meeting, we already started dissecting. Uh, I, I added in two more conditions that we were discussing as well as the way that the motion was written was incorrect and we had to kind of dissect that. I mean, I, I think we're kind of in a position again that we'd have to kind of wordsmith on the fly how to, how to even put together a motion once we address the, the special use permits that are still in the waivers that are still pending.
I agree with you, Mike. I think what, I think what we need to do is go through the outstanding issues and give some direction to the interim town planner so he can draft that memo for the next meeting.
Okay.
I think we have too many open issues where we haven't decided what we want. And so that's what I was trying to do was give you that list of what we had to decide on.
And I, well, I'm happy to, to put together something that starts with what Ruben did and kind of incorporates what I'm hearing. I have taken down the handful or so various issues that you outlined earlier. And so I would just say that if there's any other members that have things they want to consider or issues that they feel need to be addressed, I mean, you can email them to me or to staff. You know, and I don't know if it's been your custom, but we can put all of these conditions on there and you can certainly choose to strike some of them at, you know, at the meeting. But at least getting them on there allows you to look at them and, and discuss them. Um, I just don't want to miss anything because I wasn't privy to everything else. But I've gotten everything Anne mentioned.
You also need to look at the motions and decisions from the minutes of the last meeting. Because three decisions were made. There's a bunch more that need to be made, but three were very clear based on the vote. But there's some others that still, my list is still, are things that I think are still pending and need to be addressed.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent with Anne.
But I, we can't possibly act on this tonight because there's too much in limbo.
I mean, I, am I correct in understanding? I think the only two issues are the sidewalk, well, actually, I think the only issue, is the sidewalk the only issue or am I missing something? The hydrant's going to go in the, at the water main, rear lots.
That's the hydrants resolved. The sidewalks, the open space, I believe, has not been resolved.
Rear lots, well.
And the rear lots, oh, and we need a condition written correctly that would become our boilerplate for incorporating the developers agreement.
I, there, I, I did this, I did this, I don't know if you have the newer approval motion, but I have item 24, as applicant shall enter into a development agreement with the town of East Windsor.
No, I don't think we have that document that you're looking at.
I, I don't have it.
Oh, I had sent it to the planning department.
That was a, I think. That was added on to the general conditions to last meeting.
After, after the last meeting, I, I must have had the impression that you wanted a fee in lieu of sidewalks because I have an item 23, applicant shall pay a fee in lieu of sidewalks in the amount to be determined by the town engineer. 24, as applicant shall enter into a development agreement with the town of East Windsor. Number 25, applicant shall contact, self-contract the services of a licensed environmental professional to conduct a phase one environmental assessment of the subject property prior to any construction.
That's, that's.
Which said about the hydrant.
And I agree with you, Lenny. I think it, when I read the minutes of the last meeting, that we approved a waiver of the sidewalks. So the fee applies. So I, I think that has been addressed based on the minutes. So I think the issue is really the open space and the special permit for the rear lots.
Okay, and I'm just going to pipe up that.
There's also the assessment of the property by a soil scientist, Lynn. I think that was discussed in, in detail because most of the concerns of the, of the neighbors were the E D B flying in the air, et cetera, et cetera. So I think we, I, I got the impression we, as a, as a commission, agreed that there should be a, a, a phase one assessment.
Frank, it's Anne, I think one decision just read had that.
Yeah, applicant shall contract the services of a licensed environmental professional to conduct a phase one environmental assessment of the subject property prior to any construction.
Yes, yes, that, thank you, that's.
And, and, and the only other comment I want to make is, I don't know if you all recall, but I wasn't really in favor of ending up with a little piece of open space out there that I had to maintain. So the fee in lieu of would be wonderful in my world.
Yeah, I heard you, but I guess I didn't know if a land trust or somebody else would want to maintain open, own and maintain open space.
Okay.
I heard that the town didn't. But I didn't know if anyone had contacted that North Central Land Trust.
Or, or the conservator.
Yeah, exactly, that kind of a, a third party.
Tried getting in contact with them this week, I, I will by next meeting. But if, if there was another party, even if it was just maintained by the neighbors, I have a question on that though. Would we be able to, who, who determines where the open space would come from? Is that something that the board has any control over? Or is it the engineer brings it to us and we say yes or no? How, how does that work, the open space?
I would say if you decide that you, if you find someone that wants, this is my opinion, if you find someone that wants to take the open space, like the North Central Land Trust or whatever they're called, or, or some other group like that, then the developer and their engineer, I, I would think would offer you up a piece of open space. I don't think, I don't know that you get to dictate where, where you get it. I don't know, am I correct on that, Mike?
Yes, so there's a little bit of flexibility there because, you know, the intent of open space in some cases, not with all developments, that it's supposed to contribute to the open space goals of the town. So having the developer just carve off some land that's, you know, rock ledge or something and saying, here's your open space town, you know, see you later, is not really the intent. So I think you have some flexibility if what he gives you at a first cut is totally useless land that he wouldn't have gotten density from anyways. But you're right in that you don't get to draw a circle on the map and say, this is what we want. Um, so it's a little bit in the middle, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. I would agree with that.
So would it be, would it be something where as the board, if, if we gave an opinion like, because of the topography of the land and the fact that there's only been one person in the entire town that we've heard from at a meeting that is not opposed to this development, we would suggest that lot four, five and seven became the open space for the rural characteristic of town? Could we write a suggestion or something of that sort to the builder? And then they come back and say, no, but we'll give you this part to work like that? Or do they say, here's what we want to give you?
Well, I, I think that's, you, I don't think you can, you can tell the landowner that you want them to give three of his, his or her building lots to us for open space.
So, so then they would just say, okay, well, we'll give you the backside of lot 11, somewhere near the upland review line.
Yeah, that's what, how I think it would work.
Which does not fit to our town's open space because that's what we've ended up with every other time, which is why our town has a sour taste in their mouth about open space. Nobody wants it because it just becomes a maintenance issue. But if it's something in an, in a prominent area that everybody's going to take pride in it, I don't think it would really cost the town much. And if anything, it should cost the sub, the people putting in a subdivision because they're, they're the ones making the profit off it. So it shouldn't then bring another thing back on the town to pay for, in my mind.
Well, I would think the opens, the open space needs to be, even if the North Central Connecticut Land Trust wants the open space, they would have to be able to have access to it from a public road or other property of theirs. We could not just give them a land, I mean, the town wouldn't take a landlocked piece of open space in, in the back of a subdivision. There would have to be an access, an adequate access to the piece of property so it could be utilized, even if it was just for maintenance purposes from a public way or other property of whoever's going to take ownership of it.
What we've, what we've kind of gone down the road of on previous applications is unless it's contiguous with other open space that the town currently holds, we were leaning more towards fee in lieu of to, to eliminate all these postage stamp lots all over town.
That is correct.
But suppose we, suppose we reworked this design to be a little bit better of a design than, and having the corner where kind of for safety issues and aesthetics, you don't come up to that four-way intersection and there's a house on every corner, one lot would still stay open. Because I think really that's the only piece that all these people that care about their view, yeah, they're going to see out their front door. But from people coming into town, Depot Street draws people from Ellington to the center of Broadbrook, anybody that's driving through town, which is the majority of our residents, which I feel we're here to look out for their well-being, would drive up and that's the piece they would see would be that, that corner section. So if that then became an open space where the sidewalks draw into that, so I think it does connect to an open space goal because at the other end of the sidewalk is the reservoir. If you park there, you could go for just about a mile walk and you would end up at this other little park.
I, I think we're kind of where we can't dictate to the developer what piece of property we want.
I mean, you guys, if the commission, I see, I understand, you know, it's, it's tough because you're, you're decide, trying to decide whether you want fee in lieu or open space, but you haven't actually been told by the developer what he's willing to give you for open space. So you're really evaluating an idea, which is, you know, which is more complicated. I suppose, you know, if the sentiment of the commission is, we want to see what you have, you can certainly, you know, we could talk with him and, and see if he would, you know, what he'd be willing to do. If it didn't eat into his density, you know, and he could still get what he needs to make it work, you know, he might not be against it. But we'd need to know, you, I think you guys would need to know what his open space proposal would look like before you could, you know, unless you totally rule it out because you, you decide it's not contiguous with anything else, doesn't further the town's open space goals, so there's no point. And, you know, then you can move forward. But it sounds like you might want to be seeing what he might want to give you.
I guess what I would like to propose is for the next meeting that we ask Michael Damato to come up with your recommended. your recommended conditions we would consider, starting with Lenny's and addressing having a conversation that we ask you to have a conversation with the land trust and the developer and see if there is a path that you could recommend to us. Or there's nothing in the best interest of the town, so we should just take fee in lieu of open space. So if you had two options, you know, if there's nothing you can recommend, then the motion would be written to require fee in lieu of open space. If there is some potential, something that can be worked out, then you would draft a motion that's two two choices. We could pick A or B. And then if you could look into the special use permit for the rear lots, if you believe there is more than two contiguous rear lots. And having three would be a violation of section 408.3E. And then I think what we've already done is waived the sidewalks. So I think that's history unless you disagree with, when you read the record, you disagree with my assessment of what we did last time.
Excuse me, Commission, Attorney William Case, I represent the developer. I'd just like to bring a point of point of order. This has already been brought to a vote. A vote has already started. To to have this kind of dialogue about the changing the application and further, I think are not in order here. We've already started a vote. I think it's on the commission's agenda here to finish the voting that was begun.
To what Ann had said, I I don't see in the minutes where we did approve the sidewalk. I'm I'm reading through it now. I just I don't see where it says that we approved the the sidewalk. I thought that was kind of still being discussed. I think that was something that kind of got held up at the last one.
Mr. Chairman.
My point here is that the the vote has already begun with the application that's before you. I think it's it behooves the commission to follow the protocols and that are are set up for commissions when they have applications and public hearings are closed and votes start.
Frank, you had a comment?
I I think I I think all of us should read the minutes carefully because many of the things we're discussing have been answered in, as Ann has and said, has been answered in in the minutes from the last meeting. And I'm not so sure if the attorney's in in order to address us, but he perhaps knows better than I do. I I think it would be whom the applicant to listen to us. Because if 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 he would like a vote right now on approval or disapproval, he he might, he might be disappointed. I think it'd be to his advantage to to listen to us and try to work things through and be reasonable.
I would be fine with voting, like you say, Frank. But it to your point about reading the the minutes, line 599, I think it's where I'm reading about the sidewalks. And maybe we got a little says to not approve the request for a waiver. So I think we did not approve the the sidewalk waiver at the last meeting. If I'm if I'm reading this correctly, it's line 599 in the minutes that I'm seeing.
Okay, this is Len. I my belief, I don't have the minutes in front of me, but my recollection is they requested a waiver of sidewalks. You denied the request for the waiver, which means you have to decide whether or not you want sidewalks or a fee in lieu of sidewalks.
That's what I understand.
My recollection is you did approve the request for a waiver of streetlights.
But that's my recollection, that's correct. And then there was a motion on the landscaping architecture that didn't have a second, so the motion failed. I mean, that's that's to me very clear in the minutes.
Right. So you want to approve the waiver of the landscape architect as well.
Correct.
So I guess the outstanding items, I don't remember the open space issue. I don't remember if you decided that or not, quite frankly. And then what to do about the sidewalks? And then you had some questions about the rear lots.
Take a look at, take a look at line 670.
It just says he's assuming the commission wants. So I don't see where we voted on that.
We did not. We did not, it was left up in the air. The developer was told to be coming back to us with answers to some of these questions because the the whole entire application is basically we'd like to put in some lots here and we're going to run a water main. And we 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 just want approval, we'll go ahead and do it. And and there's just more to it, more to it than that. And there are people's concerns that need to be answered. There are town concerns that need to be answered. I I think they they need to come back to us with some more concrete answers to these things, especially, you know, how this whole thing is going to progress. It's just my my personal feeling on it.
Mr. Chairman, this is Frank. I agree 100%. I think Jay Ursery would be a big, big asset to this whole discussion we're having tonight. As a matter of fact, I thought he might be here tonight. I was hoping he would be here tonight.
Frank, Russo's office is represented tonight by Tim Kuhn. He's on, but the public hearing is closed and you can't really ask for any. They're really not allowed to give you any more input.
You're absolutely, you're absolutely right. You're right, Lenny, you're absolutely right.
Our conversation needs to be with the town staff.
You're you're absolutely right, my my error.
They could reapply, can't they?
What was that?
I said they can always reapply, can't they?
Well, I don't think they need to reapply there. I I I mean, I'm not a lawyer. I'm not a town planner. I was kind of put in the role temporarily. The way I see it, I I I believe you have time to discuss this application further. I don't believe your timeline is, I mean, you just had the public hearing two weeks ago. So you have time to continue to discuss the application if you choose to do that. You did start your your, I don't know, whatever you want to call it, approval process or what have you with the, you know, with the waiver issues, which clearly should be addressed before the subdivision, in my opinion. You need to know what you're going to waive and what you're not going to waive in that. If if you're that uncomfortable with with what's hanging out there and you want Mike to do some review on it, you have the time to do that if you're uncomfortable. I I mean, you know, I it doesn't seem that complicated, but it seems like there are some issues that you're not comfortable with regarding the rear lots and the open space. And and I I don't, I I guess you're really not sure what you want to do with the sidewalks yet. So you you're certainly within your timeframe to to, you know, to continue your discussion until the next meeting and hopefully give Mike some time to to review it. I can certainly sit down with Mike and go over all my, what I have and my memos and what have you. I mean, if that makes you more comfortable.
Mike, it would also be helpful when you give us a memo for the next meeting if we knew what our deadline for action was.
I think we lost Mike.
Yeah, I think we did too. Yeah, I think he disappeared. He must have lost his connection. But whatever you decide you want, just just make a note of it. And I'll, you know, I'll, I'll certainly meet with Mike and go over what I have with what he has. And there he is, he's back. You back, Mike?
Yeah, my internet just crashed, so I'm running hot spot now. Sorry about that.
That's quite all right. We we realized you were gone.
Mike.
Technology.
We're gone. I asked that when you put together the memo for our next meeting, you put clearly at the top what our deadline for action is. Because at this point, we don't know if we're up against the time clock or we have another two weeks.
Yeah, so I'm I'm glad that you you brought that up. I wanted to get on the record, you know, yes, the public hearing is closed. So interacting with anybody or or folks talking to the commission wouldn't be appropriate. But under the COVID deadlines, which are still in play, commissions have an additional 90 days. So unless you have used those up previously, which is possible, I haven't reviewed this, you you could certainly do that. We can talk about that at next week, but I I will lay all that out for you.
They closed the public hearing at the last meeting, Mike, like two weeks ago.
Yeah, so you're 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 more than fine. And it's certainly appropriate for the commission in in discussion for old business to talk about conditions and what they're comfortable with and what that would look like. So I I'll include all those deadlines in that that memo for your review at the next meeting, but you have time.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on this? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to continue this discussion at our next meeting, which would be the second Tuesday in September? We do not have a meeting again in August.
To your first meeting in September.
Right, yeah, the first meeting.
September 8th.
Second Tuesday, right?
September 8th.
Thank you.
I I can make a motion to postpone the vote on the Broadbrook Meadows resubdivision applicant. Windbrook Homes LLC 15 lot residential subdivision property located at 131 Depot Street, corner of Depot Street and East Road, property owned by Sheila Sheros, R3 Zone, map 99, block 53, lot 005. Discussion continued to the next regular meeting on September 8th, 2020.
Motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, hands, identify yourselves, Richard Sullivan.
Hi, Mike Kowalski.
Hi, Frank.
Ann Gobin.
Marty.
I had to unmute, sorry, I I agree, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And maybe what we should do here is is to write down what it is that we want to know so that we can have a vote one way or another on this at the next meeting. Any comments on that?
So if I can summarize, Lenny, you're going to meet with with Michael and and discuss everything that you've you summarized. And between the two of you, you're going to come up with a a motion and we can discuss it and either accept it or reject it. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, he's he'll he'll be in the office on Thursday. And I will make it a point to put aside some time to to go down and visit with him and go over the application.
Mike, do you have any questions from us, anything you're not clear on to be able to draft the next motion?
No, I I think I've got, you know, all of the the issues and I've been taking notes on everything. So I'll review everything with Len. I'll go through the minutes and I'll come up with something for the next the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Let's let's see if we can't put a period in. Okay, other business? We have anything to discuss there? No, here, correspondence? Anything going in, anything going out? And we're, this is, this meeting here is supposed to be our business meeting. I I don't know if we have any other business actually to discuss. Does anybody have anything that we should be looking at or we should put on the burner somewhere? Hearing nothing, Joe, Lenny, you have anything?
Not done. I do not.
Okay. If there's nothing else, as for a motion for adjournment?
So.
There's a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Back in.
All those in favor? All right.
Bye.
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 Okay, have a good rest of the month, people.
Thank you.
You as well.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Good night, Dick.